Holly is medical procedures tomorrow, so she's not going to be here tonight. But what she does is she writes up minutes based on the Zoom recording when she gets it. She's done that once before. So just make sure your mic is on when you're speaking or leave it on unless it dies. We'll get some new batteries for her. And we'll call the meeting to order, so I'll just call. I'm here. Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Nestro, Mr. Winterman?
Here.
Mr. Groh?
Here.
Mr. Huthy and Vice Chair.
Here.
Okay, join me with us to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So we are recording.
Correct.
Privilege of the floor. Is there anything that anyone wants to? Another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Just have a couple of things. I do have a copy of the proposed budget if anybody wanted to take a quick look at it. It doesn't have the previous year or something by side comparison, but.
It's available online.
Available online.
And last year's is available.
Last year's is available. And then Christopher gave us, gave me a brochure. They held a public information meeting for the replacement of the County Road 36 bridge over the Honey Island. So that's down just north of Cross Road. Crosses, I think he said now it's either two or three large cover pipes and they're going to take it out. Do a full bridge type installation. They're going to do it, they're going to do it in April of 26. Way out of the game in terms of planning it. It'll be one-way traffic throughout. Close the road. It'll be one-way controlled by traffic lights. County Road 36, West Lake Road, just north of Cross Road. Sales into town. Comes up. Side of 36 and comes under. Somewhere along the towns. They're just, just north of the two houses that are there. So they're going to take it out and put in concrete. Cast concrete thing. Anyway, brochure if anybody wants to see. And I think they're talking about six months. Start construction April 2026 and complete the construction about in October, so 10 months or six months. So that was just kind of information. With that, we'll move to approval of the minutes. Questions or corrections on minutes? They looked good to me. Didn't see any need. Okay, Steve, what have you got?
County Planning Board duplicated the year. So it's kind of a big deal.
Twenty, oh, okay. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, okay. One of those will be crossed off, okay. Anything else?
I move to the minute.
Okay, Dwight, is there a second?
Second.
Caitlin, all in favor? I opposed. Thank you. Good job, Holly. She's not listening even. So we'll go to reports. Town Board meeting, the Town Board met on the fourteenth. Not a whole lot of interest. Highway Department, they reported that the Lawrence Hill Road project is complete, both sections, the north-south and the east-west. They're working on the Canada's Hill Road. They're doing some grading and compacting to keep that road decent shape. Otherwise, they're doing some cleanups of ditches around town. The mowing is, third run of the mowing around the town was in progress. They are purchasing a couple of vehicles. Been pre-approved. One is a mower and one is a ten-wheel truck. It been pre-approved, but they were, they had the resolution to actually purchase those vehicles. So they passed that. Public hearing is in the November meeting, public hearing to get comments on the proposed budget. That'll be their normal Town Board meeting on November. Reappointed Carol Ann Joki to the Canada's zoning board of appeals. A resolution for appreciation, a letter of appreciation to Paul Miller on his resignation and they appointed Rich Winterman as the regular planning board member to fill the remaining that Paul had on the board. And they have another Board of Health has a public hearing on a septic setback. At their next meeting.
What's going on with that change?
Well, the change is in the works.
As in they have approved it or?
Yes, they have approved it and it's been sent on to the, I think it's the attorneys for editing and then it has to go to the state. However, in this case, the variance request is even greater than what the state is. State minimum to property line or road is 10 feet. This variance is requesting a five-foot setback. I questioned, can a local Board of Health grant a variance of New York state law? Nobody knew. Afterwards, after the meeting, they did a follow-up and Bill Groh, who's the engineer, certified septic installation placement, responded that yes, the local Board of Health can. Doesn't seem right to me, but he responded that that's, I guess, Town Board just accepting his word. They don't think they're challenging it. So anyway, our, the revision to our local law is not yet approved yet anyway. So they're going to, as far as I know, they're going to add and give them a variance even against across the state. I don't understand that, how that can be right. It's Mark Melmedir, if you know Mark. He's building a home across the road, but hearing the house on the east side that they want to sell needs some septic work, so that's what variance is for.
Yeah.
No, that is surprising. Yeah.
Yeah, now, he's moving across the road. He owns a lot of property. More modern house, single-story. Mark Melmedir, who has said the house was built in the eighteen hundreds. No, 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 that's, that's Jim Kirsten. Yeah, his is, well, it's not new now, but it's new, new in the last 10 years or so. No, that's Jim.
That's why I put my notes in last month.
Mark is on Cadillac's sleigh road. So anyway, that's what that was all about. So they are going to have a request for variance and they, I guess, a local Board of Health approved as far as I know.
I did wonder, they didn't have to get a site plan approved from us?
No.
For the new construction?
No, building permit.
Okay.
It's not in the Honey Island Lake Shore district, Lake Shore district, they would need a site plan.
Okay.
Yeah, or if they're in a conservation district, they would need a site plan.
Yes, but it's a rural, it's in the rural district.
I looked at it quickly. I haven't seen any paperwork. He just couldn't send me the stuff to take a look at. So new building in rural district.
Okay.
I mentioned the conservation district because they're going to be doing some work at the Mueller station, which is in the conservation district, so that'll have to come to us for site plan.
I don't know if there's any residential in the conservation district, is there?
Well, I don't know. Shouldn't be any residential.
Shouldn't be any.
Mueller.
Yeah, I know Mueller.
Station, that's what they're going to do is expand that one of the buildings, I don't know which, the aquaculture building or the main building. So we will see that eventually. That's why I mentioned site plan in conservation district. I just had, I wondered why they were going to come to us for site plan. I didn't realize it was in the conservation district.
I went to one of the New York State Freshwater Weapons Act update. I'm going to have to review my notes now that I want to get in the way of the Melmedirs, but I'm just kind of curious.
Oh, well, we should look into it. You know, the application went to the CEO and he.
But I don't think the water, yeah, I don't think the watershed rules are official yet. I think those are still all in the proposal phase.
Well, there was, there are some comments about if your land is adjoining a recognized wetland.
Yeah.
There are some considerations.
Right.
But I don't know whether it's does.
I think New York State is redoing all their wetland stuff.
You're right. So changes proposed to.
Right.
Three main changes. My notes are mapping, maintain the current 12.4 acre threshold 2028, changing winter bakers that will be standard for.
Right.
Are your microphones on?
Pardon me?
Not sure it came up. Oh, okay. Um, it's a good point and I'll take a quick look at it. Take a look at our code as well and see what it says about and I'm not sure if his adjoins a recognized wetland.
And they're, they're building pretty far. They're set back quite a ways from the actual state.
Yeah. Their land is. My point was that he made an application to the code enforcement officer. Enforcement officer did not refer it to us for site plan, so I'm assuming he looked at it. This question about wetland. But if anybody wants to look it up, it's in their playbook. Good exercise. And that was pretty much, there have been some, you're going to see some additional sheriff patrolling the road, local roads, especially around school bus run times. Reports people, particularly the birch hill, middle road, people run that stop sign. They come up the hill, they don't want to stop, but the buses are coming through, so I actually saw, I've seen a sheriff sitting over there a couple of times, so you might see it in some other areas in the town. And that's pretty much it. Water district, everything's running okay. Questions? They put out pretty good, they put out very good notes, minutes also, but they're always a month behind. See more detail about the Town Board or look at it soon. County Planning Board?
I attended the county planning board.
October ninth. I was unable to go to the CRC before.
Okay, I attended the county planning board. Ten nine, didn't make it to the CRC. Nothing of interest to our town or near our town. As always, big developments in Kandakwa.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Birch?
Yeah, can I ask Birch how? Yeah.
Batteries.
How it's going?
It's going fine. Yeah. I want to make it to the CRC, but it, you know, it's not easy to.
Yeah. I know, yeah.
It's in the afternoon?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's 2:30 or 3:00 or.
Sorry. 3:30. I think it's 3:30.
Okay. All right.
But it is interesting, you know, you see what's going on. I mean, like, there's this one development, you know, where the firehouse is. Three or four hundred house development, you know, and I think you see all these townhouses being built and smaller. But actually, I was reading something.
Yeah. Listening to some.
We're not getting younger.
Some commentator and they were saying owning a townhouse, a townhouse is the new American dream. For some. Yeah, for some of this. Okay. Zoning Board, they did have a meeting to do a setback request for a deck. They tabled it. Looking for more information. Code enforcement, you have work. If you have any questions. Contact Joe Miller or Rich, Deputy Chief. I'm going to answer plan. You got anything for us?
We met earlier this month. We started the process for planning for our public engagement meeting and public hearing, the first of two. We're going to do those after the first of the year. We are going to extend the deadline for the surveys to January 1st and do a second postcard mailing. And we've had over 130 responses to the survey so far, so.
I'm assuming everyone sitting here is still about their survey? Yes.
Then my mic was off then. You've got time. We're extending the deadline.
I was going to ask you when the deadline was, because I mentioned to my son.
Yeah.
I said, you gotta do that, Zach.
We're extending the deadline and we're going to send another postcard.
We'll get it done. I know we're welcome, in fact, but.
Sounds like it's coming right along.
And I reminded Robin down at the library, she, the new employee down there, they live on the old Bald Hill Road over there. She wasn't aware of it, but she said, oh, I'll look right into it, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
We're getting a couple of mailings, mailings. She's been coming to Town Hall every month, so.
I do it on paper, but you said you were preferring that, so, because they've got them right down the library and I want to grab one and do it, but.
You can do it right on your phone.
You can do it on paper if you want, Steve. I've, I've got no problem with it. If that's how you're more comfortable, you're welcome to do it.
Okay.
There you go. Special dispensation.
Caitlin will have to stay up later.
But you, you can do it on the phone, you could?
Yes.
Okay, well, maybe someone can show me how. I got another phone question when it's time, but as long as we're on phones.
Okay. And so new budget's been, budget request was included in 2025, about this, roughly the same amount that we had for 2024. So we're all covered on that, assuming they pass that budget. Questions for Caitlin? We don't have any old business. The only new business was to fill out your vouchers. Have to take the money if you don't want it, obviously. I told Rich that tonight would be the only one he would put in. I said, why don't you just wait till December? Total for however many you make between now and then. And so is there any question about vouchers? Anything else that anybody wants to talk?
I got a question then, this.
Yes.
Planning Federation on these webinars?
Yes.
Does anyone have, like I say, when you do have to send an email?
Yeah.
Why, I think it's NYPDF@NYPD.org, is that right?
That's right.
I'm having one heck of a problem with this voice girl, Nancy Perry, either call, you can't get anybody into the phones. They say they'll.
Why are you calling?
Because I can't get anything from emails. Okay, send the emails and I can't get any responses from the emails. And I'm not doing it. My son's doing it, okay? I can't get it. It's truly a boss, truly a boss. I can't get a response to my emails. It's a Sunday start. I've got one out of three, which I'll give you tonight. It's on my phone. I don't know what to do with it. But I'm up to here. I'm, I just wanted to make sure. And I had to write.
That's it. That's the correct email. You have to give them your name or email address and the town.
Town, position, phone number.
Email.
I had an issue getting.
Yeah, my son does it on my phone.
They come back an email.
Right, but I can't get it. They're like ignoring me and I talked to Nancy Perry once, so she helped. I've left two messages so far. I still need some help here. Nobody's doing anything. I can't, can't get a response. Now, my next step is I'm going to try and find out who funds this darn thing, this NYPDF. Is that a, I wonder if that's any tax dollar funding or is it a private enterprise, I wonder?
What are you going to do?
I'm going to complain when I finally get these things. I really am. This is terrible service. Yeah, this is terrible service. And if it is publicly funded.
I don't know, but New York Planning Federation sounds like a state.
I called the Association of Towns today. They're going to.
But it's, it's not a state entity.
Okay.
But it's a private.
It's a private then? So there's no tax dollars that go towards this?
Well, yes.
Or maybe indirectly from the towns?
The towns.
So they are held accountable to the towns in some way, right?
Town, the town pays an annual fee.
Okay.
And then.
Okay.
That's why we can attend those for free.
Okay.
And so, you know, like, beginning of the year, we update the list of who's on that, so we'll be adding Rich to that.
Okay.
So that's how it's funded.
I mean, it should be easy, but it's not. And I'm right up to here and I'm just about done with them. I've got, if I can't get them, I've got all my notes from the darn webinars. That's going to have to be good enough, because I, I'm not going to get stressed out over this thing, which I already, I just, I don't like that. Somebody says they're going to call you back. Nobody calls you back. You know, you leave a voicemail. They say, leave your name, number, the whole nine yards. We'll call you back. Nobody calls you back. Nobody cares anymore, you know?
We care. I care very much.
Our society has gone to.
So you're emailing NYPDF.
At?
Dot.
Dot.
NYPDF.org. NYPDF.
At. Yeah.
NYPDF.
I got it exactly, just like that.
Because I have.
And you checked your junk mailbox.
Did you look?
Yep, I had my son do that. Yeah, because that's what Nancy Perry said first. Check your junk. You know, why do I got to check my junk? He did it anyways. He did, he did check anyways.
That's not the NYPD.
I would know how to check, but he did.
Yeah, make sure you have.
My daughter-in-law did.
It's got to be dot org.
I got one of those on my phone. I got the, I got September 24th and they have one tomorrow also. Then I did October 22nd last Tuesday and then they have one tomorrow at noon or something.
I'm going to be asking.
That'll be my fourth. Okay.
Just write.
They won't.
As soon as it's over, write an email. That's what they say. As soon as we're done today, send us an email. That's what I do.
I can't do it because I don't have my son with me. So it takes like a few days.
I'm sure they have.
That's another reason I'm done with it. I can't, I can't do this crap. I can't do it anymore. I'm done with it. It's frustrating. I just want, I wanted to make sure I had the right address for these emails and I thought, well, maybe they're going somewhere, but.
Man, I've been getting, I've been getting certificates within a week.
Well, you probably send the darn thing to request right after you're done. Right. But I signed, I know how to do it. I figured out how to log in. So when I, all these people on there, they say, oh, geez, Billy Bob from wherever and I, Steve Groh, tell me, can I? So I signed in. They know I was there.
I did find another email address for that, N. Perry.
Oh, she gave me her email address too. I haven't emailed, well, I did email her once too. She never responded to my email. My son, I don't know how I did that one. And they're both very computer literate, both of them.
Okay. Actually, I attended, I saw your name pop up that you attended. Topic last week was dealing with controversial issues.
It was it.
It's going to be great.
Yeah.
The end was put in a list of things that would be controversial and references.
It was that attorney, Amy Levine. Yeah. It was all, it was garbage. It was absolute garbage.
Just gave a list, categories of things, and then the list of, well, here's a case and here's a, you can look it up. I got an hour training. And by the way, I did send everyone a email reminding you that we can carry over training hours.
Right.
Up to four, one year. So you get eight hours this year. You don't have to do it next year.
See, if we could have done it.
Couple hours this year. Next year, you only need two, but you can't continue to carry.
If we could have done it this year, I wouldn't be bothering you, okay? Because I had a whole bunch from.
Okay.
Last year.
Controversial issues. Was anybody else on that one?
Yeah.
Oh, September 24th.
The first slide was pretty interesting because it was a picture and it was somebody, I forget what town, but, oh, Potsdam. It was in Potsdam and somebody wasn't, they weren't allowing them to open a Dunkin' Donuts. So what this person did in kind of a revenge move, did this public art of toilet gardens. So this guy did all of these toilets that he put flat. That was the first.
I couldn't get the picture.
Flowers out of it along a public space and called it art. And it was kind of, he did that.
I heard you talking about.
Said it was an art project.
Yeah. I've seen that art project in real life.
You have? In Potsdam? Oh, my goodness.
My son went to college there during the boom of the toilets.
Oh, my gosh. So I thought it was going to be really engaging talk, but then there was, you could see her slides along the left-hand side and you could see they were all going to just be lists of cases. And every now and then she talked about some of the cases, which was interesting, but it was pretty dry.
Didn't give us any hints of how you approached it, you know?
Yeah.
Processed to ease tensions, you know? What should you look for?
Yeah.
Handle when it's a conflict. Yeah, because we've got a few conflicts here ourselves over.
Yeah.
Over the years.
That's too bad, because that conflict one we went to, the MRV did for the Planning Federation was really good. I thought that was a great session.
Some good and some bad.
I feel like sometimes the attorneys, they're always a little dry.
Well, even this one, they.
Last week?
They didn't have a display. They didn't put it on a full screen. They showed Nancy on one square. The other square was the attorney and then we had her screen, but it wasn't a slideshow. It was just, you know, a slide and it had a list of all our slides. So we could hardly read it anyway. So they did not do a very good job on that.
And she went right to the minute, right to 1:00 o'clock.
Yeah, she did it.
It went before, ended by 12:40.
Yeah.
That was unusual.
Yeah.
Okay, well, any more complaints today?
I got that off my chest. I feel like.
Is there anything that anyone would like to bring up?
I've just got one thing, really quickly. I did get the updated propane rate. The town is going with Superior and the rate is 199 a gallon. And NOCO did honor that rate as well. And the rate is one ninety-nine a gallon, and NOCO did honor that rate as well. They just called that last week. It is, it is down twenty cents from last year.
Yeah.
So one ninety-nine is the town rate.
Actually, I've gotten my first delivery already.
Yeah, we got our delivery, that's why I was like, I gotta find out.
So, the, what this is, Rich, is if you, if you use a local propane supplier. They give the town and town officials, appointees a reduced rate. All you have to do is let them know.
Yeah, wow, well, they, they may.
Yeah, they, it might be too late.
Or do you use propane? Who's your supplier?
Murbito.
So.
Well, they may, I don't.
They may not, may or may not, but ask them.
Sure, ask them if they'll match the tone.
Superior's town price.
Superior propane.
Sometimes you have to threaten that you're gonna switch, and then they honor it.
Anything else? Yeah, right, insist.
Yes.
Anything else? Our next meeting is Monday, and it's before Thanksgiving, it's the Monday before Thanksgiving, so. Disrupt our fourth Monday. But it will be in December. All right, we're done?
I moved to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed, thanks, everyone.